Morning. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 26th. Now, usually, it is our custom that the flag salute, the Pledge of Allegiance, is done in rotation, and at our last meeting, it was Karen Schwab who led us in the pledge, which would mean that today would be Supervisor Robert Weigant's turn to lead us in the pledge. However, I have exercised my chairman's prerogative to change the agenda to ask Supervisor Montgomery if she, in her last meeting, would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, this is time for our Board to consider consent. The consent calendar is comprised of items that are considered non-controversial and meet all the standards that are applicable to taking one big vote on a bunch of happy items. Counsel has her light on, so there's something she obviously wants to make us aware of here.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we need to pull off of consent, item 17C.
Oh, oh, yes, I, okay, thank you, alright.
Sorry, I know what it is.
That's it?
Yeah.
Christmas is canceled. Ah, humbug. Alright, any other Board members have any items they want removed from consent for discussion? Seeing none, any members of the public wish to have the Board remove any consent-scheduled items for discussion? Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion approval of agreement.
Motion, Holmes, second, Weigant, approve the consent calendar minus item 17C. Roll call, please.
Gore.
Yes.
Weigant.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Euler. Aye, thank you very much. We will come back to that item momentarily, let's go ahead and jump to public comment. This is a time where any members of the public can address the Board on any items not on the agenda, knowing that the Board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. If you would, please try to limit your comments to three minutes, and please let us know who you are and where you're from. Good morning, Mr. Culler.
Good morning, Bradley Culler from Granite Bay. I just wanted to congratulate Placer on some good news, that they were able to flag the wetlands in our community before applying the agent orange along the bike path, and we now have two 10-foot strips on either side of the path that are bright orange and nothing living. But at least the wetlands were missed in that endeavor, so congratulations, I guess we're getting somewhere, we've figured out what a wetlands is. Bad news, however, is that, as I had predicted probably a year or two ago, that we were on our way to creating a slum in our area, and recent events have supported that. We have now got some homeless and high individuals who are shooting up in front of the Tree Lake facility, and ranting and raving and scaring kids, and leaving their trash and the needles all over the park and the area. It's, that's definitely when you're surrounded by prison fences and 40,000-square-foot buildings, it's easy to do, because there's no neighborhood there. We have a bunch of our good neighbors who have had to move out because of the truck traffic coming down the street, and they're fearing that their kids could not even walk across the street into the park they've left. And the houses that are for sale are not selling, because they've dropped their prices $20,000 to $30,000, and nobody wants to deal with the whole issue of the storage facility that is ever-expanding with no signs of stopping. And the open space that was supposed to be dedicated there, that's not being enforced, so it's open season. So, I say that you guys are responsible for creating a slum in our area. The semi-tractor trailers and 40-foot RVs that are coming down our street are a real deterrent to peace and tranquility in our neighborhood. The fact that they've got business licenses to operate out of the, out of this facility, and the truck traffic is back and forth with lawns and different subcontractors is, is getting to be a problem. It has been a problem, and it's, now it's really detrimental to the neighborhood. So, I think we're now also realizing that without open space, the rest of this facility will be built out, and we'll have a couple of thousand units instead of the nearly, nearly 700 that we've got right now. And obviously, recreation and building bike trails has not been a priority, and it's a joke in our neighborhood. And having the developers build it out as they were supposed to is not. So, I'm just saying that it's time to get Jeff Moff out of here, and to try and support our neighborhoods, and not support Jeff and his friends.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Holmes.
Good morning, Supervisors. First of all, before I talk about this, I just wanted to say thank you to Supervisor Montgomery. I've been here for a year or so, and I know this will take against my time when I'll get beeped out, but it's worth it. I really, truly want to thank you. I thought you listened more than any of the other Supervisors. Mr. Holmes, you listened. Kirk, you listened, even gave you some comments, but I just wanted to say good luck on your endeavors. Then I wanted to give you this complaint that I submitted in December, that has all the evidence for a company operating out of the facility. And one other quick thing, if you didn't catch what Brad said, yesterday morning, the Sheriff's Office could tell you, they were called out to the park again, and I will send you pictures of the needles they found, and of the person who was running around the park screaming at the top of his lungs, and they had to come out for. And that is becoming more of the norm in my neighborhood. And so, you sit here and say, "Oh, commercial facility and residential, no problem, that's what it's supposed to be, we can't do anything." I submit formal complaints that have all the information for a fictitious business name that's registered to that site, for a company operating on that site, I get zero response. I send a follow-up email, nothing. I call, nothing. You're ignoring us, it's not going away, and it's getting worse. And so, to that point, the Supervisors are here to represent us, my community. How are we going to reconcile the current relationship in Granite Bay with the Placer County Supervisors? Because it's getting worse. If you go to next door, the Planning Commissioner is berating people and is going back and forth. I stay out of it most of the time, but it is crazy. A Planning Commissioner is a neutral person for development, not promoting development, and yet you have someone representing you, Supervisor Euler, who's not doing you a service. He should go. I, I just want to say that I have been here long enough, been here over a year, coming and telling you facts, to know that I will be ignored again, and that I will continue to go, and that you will continue to take these facts and throw them in the garbage, and then you will continue to complain when we sue you. And you'll say, "Well, you know, you're just the governed, what do I care?" Well, I care. My neighbors care, my community cares, the people who have young children going to the park, where we now have needles, and I'll send you the pictures if you don't believe me. If you don't think that is a concern for the people in Granite Bay, it is. And you're my supervisor, Mr. Euler, you're the one who takes responsibility for my region to be governed. So I expect that you would do better, that you would want my community to be better, instead of going down this hill of being a neighborhood that is now plagued with more crime, more traffic. I'll finish with this. A number of the neighbors have come to me and said, "We believe," and it's just conjecture, "that they are dealing drugs out of one of the cubicles in there." We don't know. They've said, "We see multiple cars come in, two cars, smaller cars, come in, go there for five minutes, come out." When we asked about it months ago, they said, "Well, Mr. Bedretti and the County Council were out there looking to some of us, we can't do anything about that." What can be done about that? Can you bring in a sniffing dog? Can you do something to help our neighborhood, instead of just sit here and ignore us? And that's where I would like to say it. And once again, thank you, Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. County Council, do you wish to address the complaint that was received?
Yes, we did receive a copy of the complaint dated December 2018 by email last week. I contacted Tim Wagner, and they sent a code compliance officer out on Friday, interviewed the business, which by the way, has changed names, but interviewed the owner of the business, and I believe even inspected the premises yesterday and found no violations of doing business within the mini-storage. I can't comment on this other issue of dealing drugs, because I didn't have a complaint in front of us, but we did investigate this again, and if a response has not been sent out, I will follow up with code compliance to make sure one is.
So can, can I just clarify, so the business has changed its name, so he's filed a new fake business license to a different address, but he's still running out of the same place? So there we go, lipstick on a pig. He's done nothing different, he's just changed his name. I would love to see the response from the county, though, the official response, but it does nothing to change it if he's still operating out there under a different name. And he's registered to a P.O. Box number, this business was, that's now probably in the three months since he's had it, taking the time to change it, to get around the system, but he's still running up and down my street.
Let me just make one clarification here, the issue's not the name of the business, I just mentioned that as an aside, but an actual inspection and an interview with the office manager of this business was conducted on Friday, and based on that, the conclusion made by code compliance was that there was no business operating in the mini-storage.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then I'd love to know what operating is for a landscape company. When you store all your equipment there and come in and out, that's operating.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Beth Gonzalez, I'm from Rockland, and Placer People of Faith Together, and this is a plug for 211. So, last night at a meeting at St. Rose's, there's a group of about 10 people, and they had put together a resource binder to put in the church office for people who are asking what, it's just a resource binder with their pictures on it, but it was just sort of, wasn't planned for that binder to be there when we were discussing 211, that, and they were not, unaware of 211. So this is, this is what you do in old school, right? You have a binder in the church office, so this is 2019, right? So we're looking for something more up-to-date, a national program called 211. So that's our, that's one of our requests to the county today, to, you know, to support 211, to follow it through and make it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Hayden Betteridge. I've been shooting at the Auburn Trap Club for six years for the Auburn Gold Miners Trap Team. It's been an incredible experience, it's taught me great responsibility and respect for others. I have made many terrific friends through the team. Shooting at ATC has brought my family closer and gave me opportunities to really connect with my family. This Trap Club means a lot to me and hundreds of other families. I hope that ATC is around for many more years, and for many other families to enjoy this incredible experience. This Trap Club means a lot to me and a lot to other families, so I really hope you guys support the Auburn Trap Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi. My name's Chad Buescher, I'm part of the Auburn Gold Miners, the Auburn Trap Club, and one thing I have to say that's, that they've taught me is great responsibility in firearms. I believe it is the greatest responsibility a kid can possibly learn. If you'd say, "It's just something we need, we need," so, thank you. As long as I thank you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else in Auburn want to address the Board under public comment? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, step right up. Is there anybody else after this young lady who wants to? Okay, you'll be the last Auburn. Good morning.
My name is Julie Betteridge, and I'd like to tell you why the Auburn Trap Club means so much to this community. The Auburn Trap Club has been a home to shotgun sport enthusiasts since 1949. Over the last 30 years, ATC has hosted competition shoots, fun shoots, five-stand shoots, youth competitions, hunter safety classes, shotgun coaching classes, women-on-target, which teach women gun safety and trap shooting, Boy Scout campouts, and marksmanship programs, Friends of NRA meetings, birthdays, bachelor parties, and even my wedding. We've had the honor of saying a final goodbye to our friends and teammates with a shotgun tribute. When my nephew Hayden became interested in trap shooting, I became a Level 1 certified shotgun coach. The California Youth Shooting Sports Association, or CYSSA, promotes safe-shooting sports for kids grades 12 and under. Currently, there are youth teams practicing every night of the week at Auburn Trap Club. We simply have more teams in our area than places to practice. As a coach for the Auburn Gold Miners, I'm passionate about teaching safe-gun handling and trap shooting, but this sport teaches so much more. Boys and girls compete with and against each other equally. Many of our athletes are not the popular kids at school, some of them are not particularly gifted academically, some of them are the last to be picked for a team in PE, sometimes they sit alone at the lunch table. But something amazing happens when they learn how to break targets and handle a gun safely. They stand a little taller, they walk with purpose, they have confidence, they belong to a team. It changes everything, and it shows. Long into their adult lives, they will remember the things they learned at the Auburn Trap Club: give it your best shot, never give up, help out when you can, chip away at your goals, and treat others with respect. You see, the Trap Club is so much more than a building and trap machines. It's a place to celebrate, a place to meet friends, a place to compete, a place to have fun, a place to learn, and a place to say goodbye, and even a place to fall in love. Which is why it's so important that we keep this club open for our community and the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else in Auburn? Seeing nobody else in Auburn, we'll go ahead and jump up to our Tahoe, and we'll say good morning to Tahoe.
Good morning to Auburn. This is Cindy Gustafson, I'm with the Northlake Tahoe Resort Association, and my Board asked me to be here for two items this morning. First off, we'd like to make sure that the Board of Supervisors is aware that things are going really well with this winter, I'm sure you're aware of the record-breaking snowfall, but with that, we look to have record-breaking TOT tax revenues. Our first six months of the year look like we're up about $1.4 million in TOT revenue, which will set us up for another record-breaking year. Third quarter is going to be coming in soon, but the reports from our key lodging properties is we should see a similar uptake in those numbers as well, so it should be a very, very significant year for all of us. We thank Mother and Father Nature, because they blessed us with that early snow, and lots of it, so it's a great year. And the second thing my Board wanted to make sure, and I personally wanted to make sure we did, was thank Jennifer Montgomery, Supervisor Montgomery, for incredible service to this community. Our Board of Directors has so appreciated your openness and willingness to talk through issues with us over the last few years, and I certainly have, Jennifer, for all your years of service. So, again, thank you, congratulations on your new appointment, and thank you for your service to our area.
Thank you. Alright, seeing nobody else for public comment, we will go ahead into... Oh, yeah, I invited folks, please, go right on, step on up, yep. Okay, that's alright, go right ahead.
Susan Parisio, Rancher Cordova, and I have some packets here. There was a challenge with the printer where I went to print them, so they are not in color, so you can pretend like they're in color. I, when I was here two weeks ago, I said that I would bring some information on the 990s for this Humane Society of Sierra Foothills, which I have, and I apologize if I start coughing, because I've had the crud that everybody's had, not pleasant. The packets contain selected pages from the Humane Society of Sierra Foothills 990s for the years 2012 through 2017. In California, humane officers must be employed by a Humane Society or SPCA. The State Humane Association of California says so, there's a copy of an email in there from them. And also, the California Animal Welfare Association states that they must be an employee, so that means they cannot be a volunteer. And in the perfect world, these were highlighted in colors, but the first line you can't read, because it didn't print out right, says highlighted is salaries, other compensations, and employee benefits. And that is, on the first page, there is a line where they put down employee benefits and salaries. In four of those six years, they're 990s, and those are each done, they're stapled together year by year. There were no employees, there are no salaries or wages. So, 2012 through 13, 14, 15, there were no employees. The remaining two years show a line total far less than one would expect when employing multiple humane officers. Which leads us to the second highlight, which should have been yellow, multiple humane officers. Humane Society of Sierra Foothills must include a statement of program service accomplishments when filing their 990s. Every year, every single year that they file, they state humane officers as representing more than a single officer. Information provided on the 990s is required to be correct, therefore, Humane Society of Sierra Foothills has put more than one officer in the field every year since 2012, per what they stated, not actually what shows up as far as humane officers that they've nominated and had confirmed. Highlighted in green is Rosemary Freeborn's Executive Director, that would be the third line you can't read, because it didn't come out in color. And in the first four years, she was listed as the Executive Director in the Board listing, and then the last two years, 2016 and 17, she's not there. I don't understand why. What purpose was served by the change? And finally, we get down to the meat and potatoes of this, is that, the name, address, and telephone number of the person who possesses the organization's books and records is listed as 2945 Bell Road Number 175 in Auburn, which is the UPS Store, Number 4914. That is what they have listed as their physical address, the address that's given as principal address and place of business on all their official documents. We went there and asked to see their 990s, because that's where it says I can go see them on all of their documentation, and of course, they thought I'd lost my mind, they don't provide that service. Some of the questions raised might be answered by looking at the society's books, which are required by law to be available to the public, however, we don't know where to go look at them, because they don't list a place of business other than the UPS Store. So I continue to encourage the Board to please support the Sheriff's Department in investigating the Humane Society of Sierra Foothills, non-compliance with the law, because they are acting under the color of law, and yet they're not complying. I realize that you don't actually have any authority, but you guys can certainly support those who do, that's why I'm here. And thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you. Alright, now we'll go ahead and close public comment, and move on to Board Member and County Executive Reports, and I'm going to, again, exercise Chairman's prerogative and go first this time, and it is my pleasure at this time to recognize the service of Supervisor Montgomery. You've, you've worked hard, you've fought valiantly, and we are counting on you taking those two traits with you to the state to work not just on behalf of Placer County in your new role, helping with wildland fire issues, but the entire state. We thank you very much for your service to Placer County.
I'm just gonna pile on. Been a great pleasure, Jennifer, working with you all these years. One of the great things about this business is that I have a chance to develop unusual relationships and oftentimes friendships, and even though we've disagreed on a few things, not very many, we've had a great time working on some grand vision and some big things together, and one of those relates to air pollution and forest management. Lo and behold, here you are, going to work for the Governor on that mission, and we're in a special place, I think, where we can benefit from that, as well as the whole state, and I think set an example for the way that western states ought to be managed as it relates to fire management and air quality issues. So, congratulations, gonna miss you, but stay in touch, because I want to keep that friendship going.
Supervisor Holmes?
I don't smoke cigars, but I might look.
Good air quality issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
I too, Jennifer, want to thank you for your service, particularly representing my hometown office. Sometimes it was a little difficult for me, but I kept, I kept my composure, and we worked well together. And you brought a perspective from the east side of our county that was kind of lacking before, and I really appreciate your hard work. Tough district to govern, and you did a pretty good job, a lot of windshield time, and you were always showing up. But we're gonna stay in touch, because you've got a very important job to do, and we need your help, and you'll need our help as well, so, Godspeed, we thank you very much.
Supervisor Gore.
And Jennifer, I'm disappointed that I didn't get to work with you longer, but I really appreciate, first of all, your welcoming me to the Board, but it has been very clear how hard you have worked in our community. This morning, I was at Auburn Medlars as a guest, and Jennifer showed up at 7:00 a.m. at the Auburn City Hall, which she has been doing almost for 10 years, showing up on a regular basis, making sure that she shares what's going on in the county, as well as hearing from residents in our community. And, you know, this is your last week of work, and she still showed up. So it's very clear, Jennifer, that you've been very committed to our community from Auburn all the way up to Lake Tahoe, and you're a true example of what it means to be a public servant, willing to listen to people, sharing your opinions, and working really hard for your constituents and for our community, so thank you. I am excited for you and your new opportunity, and I know we, as Placer County, get to benefit by having a representative like you at the state level, so I look forward to all that you're doing, and know that we'll have a voice at the state, which is terrific, so we wish you all the best, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything to say in your defense?
Yeah, I mean, kind of, kind of like, you know, showing up at Medlars every week, you have to show up, or they say mean things about you, but, kind of like board meetings.
We don't say anything mean about you, if you know.
If you show up, you get a plaque, and they say really nice things, so, this is, I really appreciate all your comments, and I appreciate all the work that we've done together. No one agrees with anyone 100% of the time, just ask my husband. But I've had just a great opportunity and a great perspective on what it means to work with people, that you're not necessarily in alignment all the time, but how you can identify issues, ideas, projects, where you can create alignment. And frankly, I am planning on bringing some of those really annoying traits of mine to the state, you know, to be persistent and ask lots of questions that some people may find ridiculous, but help inform me in my decision-making process, and hopefully bring some insight and some different perspectives to other people who are part of that conversation. Really excited about the opportunity to continue to serve the people of Placer County, but the people of all 58 counties in California, because this wildland management and wildfire issue, there is not a single county that it does not affect. And so, I'm just delighted that the Governor, in his infinite wisdom, chose me. There were lots of other choices he could have made, but really excited, gonna continue to live in Placer County, so Placer County will continue to be near and dear to my heart. Jim can, you know, maybe sneak in there and take back Auburn the next year, who knows? But thanks to all the Boards with whom I've worked, new and past, thanks to all the county staff that I've had the opportunity to work with, many of whom I see in the audience, and thanks to my constituents, and my critics, and my supporters, because you all gave me the education and the basis to be able to feel confident when the Governor asks me to take this on, to say, "Yes, I will do that, and I will do it in an informed, educated, science-based fashion, that also understands the different needs of different communities, particularly rural communities in our county that often are underrepresented." So it's a wonderful opportunity, though, as you can tell, since I'm tearing up, it's also bittersweet, and I will miss you all, but hopefully I'll see at least some of you at, you know, Monkey Cat, or Carpevino, or somewhere here in town where they serve wine. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Alright, getting right to our first timed item, our 9 o'clock timed item, right on time, nailed it. This...
Would you want to say the 17C for a second?
Oh, thank you, thank you, sorry. Yes, we did have a consent item that needed to be pulled off, minor correction needed to be made.
Supervisors, I wanted to just fill you in, this is a minor issue, but it's our holiday schedule for 2020. The, the minor correction that was made is really on the July 4th date, the holiday actually falls on a Saturday, so this would be representative of Friday of July 3rd, so that's the only... So that's the only minor in this agenda and schedule.
So Christmas isn't canceled?
Christmas is still on. Santa's coming, yes.
All right. Okay, with that modification, what's the Board's pleasure on item 17C?
Move approval.
We have a motion, Montgomery, and a second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. All right, now, thank you. We will move on to our proclamation. This is to declare April of 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And, well, look at you.
Right here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Euler. Mr. Leopold, Mr. Schwab, Supervisors, and also Supervisor Montgomery. I also wanted to say thank you so much from the staff and our perspective of everything you've done to support us in the Children's System of Care and Health and Human Services. And I really appreciate the fact that you put another item in between there so that we wouldn't have to follow that entirely. However, Twyla Abrahamson, Children's Systems of Care Director, and I'm pleased to be here to ask your Board to approve a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And here with me is also Barbara Bassana, who is the Executive Director for Kids First. And we do have Ryan Ronco here in the room as, not Ryan, but Ryan Ronco as part of the Board of Directors for Kids First as well. So Placer County HHS...
Wait, what?
I don't know, she's accomplished something I've been trying to do for 40 years. Change Ryan into something other than Ryan. You just did it.
It's a pretty nifty trick. So I just have a few brief comments and I'll turn it over to Barbara. So Placer County HHS and the Children's System of Care work collaboratively with a number of community partners to both prevent and treat child abuse and neglect, including our Family Resource Centers, law enforcement, faith-based organizations, and others. Chief among these partners is the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation and Kids First. Kids First has, for the past 30 years, led local efforts to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, educate the community, and has delivered a variety of services which assist and support Placer's families in creating healthy and nurturing homes in which children can thrive. The month of April is National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and Placer County desires to support Kids First and all allied community members and partners in raising awareness and providing education to the community regarding the most effective methods to prevent child abuse. We'd like to encourage all employees, Board of Supervisors members, and other county partners to wear blue ribbons the first week of April and wear all blue on April 5th to bring awareness to this effort. Hence, we are wearing blue today as well. I'll turn this over to Barbara and Ryan if he chooses to say anything.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, Members of the Board, and especially, you know, today, Jennifer. I'm glad that I could be here for your final day and thank you so much for all the years that I work with you in and out of the county to not only do the work that you do, but to be one of those people that help strengthen families, help children and families and build the community. Because it's over these 30 years that Placer County has built the collaborative that it is now, that is so strong in being the village that is needed to take care of our children and families, to empower children, empower families, and strengthen them, and really build the community. So it is a great place to live, to be, and to thrive. Wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention, both with celebrating Kids First's 30th anniversary, but also in celebrating some of the efforts that the county is currently doing in child abuse prevention. As you can see before you, we have nearly reached 25,000 individuals in raising awareness and education in our communities. In light of that, we do have a rise of allegations in Placer County for child abuse prevention. And that's a good thing because then people can get the help that they need. The other good thing is because of the core practice models in Health and Human Services and the collaboration of all our allied agencies, substantiation of those allegations have actually decreased. And that's because working more with families to keep those children and families intact in the home has proven that that's a more effective method. And you can see that we've reached services, about 17,000 services to families and children so that we can increase parenting skills. We can go to home visits. We can provide classes so that people know how to positive parent in a positive way. We've seen about 6,000 people this past year and we look to increase that with our collaborations so that more can be served. And part of why we're able to do this is because if you look on the other sheet, we have a great network of volunteers. We are not just the Child Abuse Prevention Council or Family Resource Center. We also build up our community so they can then go out in the community and do more. Because of our volunteers, we nearly, we had close to 4,500 last year. They are able to go to outreach events, extend that education, be with us on classes and childcare. And just like one of our major volunteers, and he's just one of our superheroes on the Board that spend their countless hours helping to promote in child abuse in our county. This year is a hallmark year for child abuse prevention and county prevention efforts. We had a prevention summit that you may have heard about in January, that we were one of the 22 counties. A lot of the allied agencies and partners were there to really look at how we can strengthen the county and develop a prevention plan that crosses all disciplines. That's not only going to strengthen the current efforts, but we're in a really good place because we have all those collaborations already. We have the network of care. We have campaigned for community wellness. We have a collaboration in this county that other counties are really just astounded at and I think frankly jealous of. But we're able to do all that we can just because of the things in place and want to thank you for being one of those major partners. And as you, I closed my comments today. If you haven't seen it, the billboard coming into Auburn, be the one. And it's really talking about being the one to smile, care, listen, and share because it just takes one person, one individual, one business, one community, one Board to really make a difference in the life of a child and a family. So thank you for all you do.
And given that this is your 9 o'clock timed item and there's nothing else I can say...
Start the clock on this.
Other than what Twyla and Barbara have already said, I just want to say...
Is that your name for the record, sir?
Oh, sorry.
Can't be Ryan.
Thank you very much for your partnership.
Your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Ryan Ronco, your County Clerk, Recorder, Register of Voters. But thank you very much for your partnership in this and it's an honor to be a part of this organization.
All right. Well, at that, we are being asked to approve the proclamation that I will read. This is a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Placer County, whereas all adults and caregivers have a responsibility as neighbors, community members, and citizens of Placer County to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experience for children and youth. And safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident, successful, and independent adults. And child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in isolated or stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable when our communities are supportive, active, and engaged. And child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support it needs and deserves to raise the children in a healthy environment. And effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And Placer County's collaborative is among the most effective in the country. And for 30 years, Kids First, comprised of two Counseling and Family Resource Centers located in Roseville and Auburn, has served western Placer County as a Child Abuse Prevention Council and North Lake Tahoe Child Abuse Prevention Council serves the North Lake Tahoe Basin. And wearing the color blue, wearing a blue ribbon, or displaying a pinwheel in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of Placer County on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held March 26, 2019, and does hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month and urges all citizens to join Kids First and its engaged partners as they support each family's effort to keep themselves and their children safe, happy, and healthy. Do I have a motion? Move approval. Second. We have a motion, Holmes, and a second by Wiegand. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you. I will present.
And I would be remiss in not inviting you to our luncheon, our Awards Luncheon that will be on April 5th. And you will be the first to hear three of our awardees, which are Dan Calado of Del Oro High School for youth impact over his career. And we have Maddie Place from Dutch Bros in Rocklin and Roseville for the work that they've done with children and families in the community, as well as Karen Quinlan, who is a principal at Kirby. And we, our Lifetime Achievement Award is yet to be announced, so that'll be coming soon. Thank you.
All right, why don't you hold that and step on in here and we'll get the picture taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a combination for Cindy, is it Badru? Is that how we pronounce it? Not Badru?
Badru.
Badru? How about Cindy? Cindy, why don't you step on up? Janine, did you want to say a couple of words to kick off this item before I go ahead and present this?
I'll go.
No, you go ahead and step on up here and say a couple of words. You're the department head. You don't get off that easy.
Well, I'm back and the department head didn't usually say anything, but that's fine. I'm prepared. I should note first that Cindy and I have worked together longer than anybody else in the county. There's nobody else that I have worked with longer. Cindy came to work in the Treasury Tax Collector's Office one year after I did. Too long ago. I'll just leave it at that. I'll also say that there's nobody I've had more pleasure working with. She has just been incredible. She came in at the clerical level after working at a bank branch. And she worked her way up into a management position, incredibly responsible, incredibly reliable, incredibly congenial, friendly, and supportive of her coworkers. We're all going to miss her terribly. She's just absolutely wonderful to have in the office. And you're going to learn more about that when Supervisor Euler reads the resolution.
Okay. Cindy, I'm gonna go ahead and read this and then if there's anything with which you disagree, you'll have an opportunity to rebuttal.
Thank you.
This is a combination, a matter of commendation recognizing Cindy, I'll just say Cindy.
That's fine.
For her superior public service upon the occasion of her retirement after 30 years of dedicated service as an employee of the Placer County Treasury Tax Collector's Office, whereas Cindy's retiring from the County of Placer Treasury Tax Collector's Office after serving the citizens of this county in that office for 30 years. And Cindy began as an extra help account clerk one for the Treasury Tax Collector's Office in 1988, where within six months, she was hired as a permanent employee. And Cindy committed herself to continuous professional growth and improvement resulting in promotion through the ranks in the Treasury Tax Collector's Office, where she has served in the capacities of account clerk one, two, and three, principal account clerk, accounting technician, administrative services officer trainee, administrative services officer, and senior administrative services officer. Every job but Janine's, I think.
Pretty much.
And Cindy has been a valuable employee of the Treasury Tax Collector's Office, having served Placer County and its residents for 30 years. And Cindy is widely admired by her subordinates, peers, and management. And in a recent survey, two out of three down, never mind. Cindy was described by her coworkers as being conscientious, diligent, reliable, detail-oriented, smart, trustworthy, honest, having high integrity, a great work ethic, supportive, caring, compassionate, considerate, kind, fun, and a strong woman. And the second person said, Cindy's coworkers consider her a true friend who will be deeply missed on a day-to-day basis, who wish her well, and who will keep in touch with her when she is not traveling the world over the course of her well-deserved retirement. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting held March 26, 2019. On behalf of the citizens of Placer County, the Board of Supervisors acknowledges with great appreciation Cindy's exceptional service and wishes her well in retirement and her future pursuits. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I'm gonna give it to Montgomery and the second to Wiegand. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do. But I need these and this. Goodness, I'm gonna pull a Jennifer and start crying, but let's try not to. Thank you Supervisor Euler and Board Members. Some say I'm a good writer and editor, but those skills definitely do not cross over to public speaking, hence the cheat. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank you for this wonderful commendation with a special thanks to Janine. I wanted to work for Placer County because I'd heard great things about it and 30 years later, I can tell you the rumors were all true. I've always been proud to be a Placer County employee and beyond grateful to have worked under the guidance of Janine my entire career, along with dozens of the most supportive, hard-working colleagues anyone could ask for in our department, in our office, and throughout the county. People sometimes seem surprised that I spent the entire 30 years in one office, but when you have a boss that's consistent and forward-thinking, who encourages your growth, obviously by all the positions I've gone through, it just leads you not to need to go anywhere else. The Treasury Tax Collector's Office has been my second family and we've all supported each other through good times and bad, and I count myself greatly blessed to have experienced all this under Janine's guidance. And I think this is an extra special day to be here on your last day. I really appreciate all that you've done for us, Supervisor Montgomery, and I wish you the best and thank you very much.
Thank you. So I understand as a dedicated employee, you should say and take a day off when we presented the 30-year award.
That would have been the flu. I was down for eight days.
She missed our recognition of our longtime employee. She was sick. So I have the pleasure not only presenting you with the combination, but also your 30-year award.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. And I'll let you hold that. And Janine, step on over here. There we go. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I get to sit down and take a breather for a minute while we go ahead and adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Placer County Housing Authority in order to take up our 9:10 timed item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. And I'd like to say that I've only been in service to Placer County for a few months, but I echo all the thoughts and well wishes to Supervisor Montgomery. In the short time I've been here, you've been very helpful and important to me as an employee of the county. So thank you and good luck. Today, I'm here as not only the...
Like Mr. Ronco, I do need your name for the record.
I'm Amanda Sharp.
Thank you.
I was just about to mention that.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Sharp. I am the Human Services Director and today I'm the Housing Authority Director as well for Placer County. And I'm joined here today by Placer County Housing Authority Program Supervisor Janelle Martinez. This morning, we are asking the Board to consider several actions to secure $2,633,662 in federal funding for the Placer County Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program, which provides subsidized housing vouchers for low-income individuals, families, and veterans in Placer County for fiscal year 2019-2020. This year has been a year of transition with the recent retirements of both Nancy Ray, the former supervisor for the Housing Authority, and Susan Kimbley, the Assistant Director for the Human Services Division. So this is Janelle and my first year attempt in putting together the plan and presenting the plan to you. It has been a notable year for the Placer County Housing Authority. For the ninth straight year, we've been designated as a HUD High Performing Housing Authority. Our agency received a 100% perfect score once again for our Section 8 Management Assessment Program Review. These distinctions designate our Housing Authority as a qualified agency, and that means we're exempt from submitting some of the regular and five-year annual plans... means we're exempt from submitting some of the regular and five-year annual plans, but not exempt from presenting the plan that we have today, which is our administrative plan. We are here today because our Housing Authority must conduct an annual public hearing, and we must notify the public and make available our hearing materials, goals, objectives, and policies to be considered at the hearing today, with at least 45 days prior posting to the hearing date, which we have complied with. We must also submit a civil rights certification to our local HUD office, so that's part of today as well. Some background on the Placer County Housing Authority. We provide housing choice vouchers to more than 549 very low-income families and individuals who may also be veterans, elderly, homeless, and/or disabled through our Housing Choice Voucher Program. Subsidized housing assistance is available to eligible residents through several existing and newly established housing choice voucher programs. These include the VASH program, which is the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program. We've seen a 3% increase in the number of VASH vouchers leased up since the end of last fiscal year, and our program currently provides 45 vouchers to veterans who are housed through the program. The next type of voucher is the Homeless Limited Preference Program since 2017, when the Board approved homeless preference for our county. In the Housing Authority, we've been able to immediately place homeless applicants into our special waitlist. And I'd like to thank the partners we've had with the Housing Authority in that matter, the Whole Person Care and the Adult System of Care Full Service Partnership Programs, who have helped to make it a success by locating and referring folks to help us access and use the vouchers as quickly as we possibly can in that program. The next type of voucher is, as of the summer of 2018, HUD announced a notice of funding for mainstream vouchers. We applied for these specialized vouchers that can be used for households with at least one non-elderly disabled adult between 18 and 61, as well as some additional criteria our Housing Authority applied for and received and was awarded 14 vouchers, which we expect to have completely used by November 2019. Of special note is our innovative partnership with Mercy Housing and the Placer County Government Center Multi-Family Workforce Housing Development. We thank County Facilities Management and Capital Improvements Team, who continue to work to make that project actually happen. And as you know, funding for development can be difficult, and the Housing Authority does not have funds to build, but one of the ways we can act in an innovative fashion is to provide project-based vouchers. That's exactly what we've done in partnership with Mercy Housing, and along with the Mental Health Services Act Full Service Partnership in ASOC, the Housing Authority has committed 20 project-based vouchers. What this does is really help because in partnership, we will have supportive and mental health services available to the residents, and that the contribution also guarantees the use of these vouchers ongoing. They'll be absolutely used because they'll be a project-based voucher. And it also enhances the application put forward by Mercy so that they can secure funding. It helps their odds to secure funding needed. We expect occupancy in July of 2021 of that development. The actions we're requesting today include conducting a public hearing to receive public comment on our administrative plan, adopting the Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan, and adopting a resolution authorizing acceptance of the approved plan, and authorizing submission of the certifications of program compliance to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As you can imagine, the Housing Authority has to have policies and procedures, and these need to be in agreement with what the Housing and Urban Development requires. So this plan that we're putting for today is called the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan. We did have assistance in putting together and reviewing through our Format and Revision Service provided by Nan McKay and Associates. There were only a few areas in the revisions proposed to our 2019 plan that changed. All of those are available to the public and were available to you. We did receive one comment during the plan period this year. The changes that were suggested related to the comment were reflected in the copy on file with the Clerk of the Board and pertain to the process by which live-in aides are certified and defined. We're confident that the comment made was a good comment and would like to integrate that into our plan. Any comments from the hearing today would be included in the final plan as well. I believe all of you have received copies of the resolution, the proposed plan, the civil rights certification, and the public notice, and we would request that you take action as described in the agenda item. Both Janelle and I are here. If you do have any questions, we'll do our best to answer anything that you might ask today, and thank you.
Okay. Any Board members have any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. And we'll close the public hearing on this item. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Are you shy? Is that you're just a little reserved, didn't want to hop right up there? Wait for the crowd to have-
I was expecting a big rush, as we usually have. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Herb Whitaker, and I'm the Managing Attorney of the Local Office of Legal Services of Northern California. And there's a lot that I would like to say about a variety of things, but I know the time is limited, so I'll try to be very strict and to the point. The point is that Legal Services of Northern California does support the adoption of the administrative plan for the housing voucher program. We would like to commend the Housing Authority for the good work that it does. We'd like to thank them for sending the plan to us and asking for the review as they were asked to do. I would also like to point out that Legal Services of Northern California has signed on a memorandum of understanding to support the mainstream voucher program, so we're not just standing on the sidelines taking potshots at this program. We're actually working with the county to help this program work. Two weeks ago, I did have a case where one client wanted to challenge the Section 8 Housing Authority's plan because of this very issue that was mentioned, which is the live-in aide program. And we were able to consult with that client and tell them that we think that the administrative plan was adequate. So that's an example of how we don't just take potshots at the county and the Housing Authority, that we help support what they're doing. Now, that being said, I would like to move on beyond just the administrative plan to the larger issue of the importance of affordable rental housing in Placer County. It's absolutely essential, which is one of the reasons that the voucher program is one of the most important programs that we have to support affordable housing. Just to bring to the Board's attention, there was an article in the Sacramento Bee last month, March 22nd, called "With Renters Struggling, California Needs 1.4 Million More Affordable Housing Units," the report finds. This was a report from the California Housing Partnership, which found that we need 1.4 million more affordable housing units. One of the reasons is because the report says there are 2 million very low-income renter households in California where roughly 2/3 are severely cost-overburdened, which means they spend more than half of their income on rental housing. That's one of the reasons that the voucher program is so important, is those folks are not overburdened because they've got that subsidy. The subsidy is absolutely critical. Fact number two, the homeless count has come out for the year 2019, and it found in Placer County that we have 617,000 homeless people.
You might want to check that number.
I'm sorry. 600. Thank you for paying attention.
Double the population.
That's still a very significant number.
So 617-
617 homeless.
Right, the thousand, got it.
That's a very significant number, and that's one of the things that my office does, is to represent these folks, represent folks when they're losing their housing and they are, if we look beyond the statistics and we look at the human factors here, we have people who are absolutely desperate in Placer County because they're losing their housing and they have no other affordable housing to go to. I had one client two weeks ago who told me that he was suicidal because if he got evicted, there was no place for him to go to, to be able to remain in the community. So I would ask the Placer County Board of Supervisors to adopt the plan, but to also do more. Consider other policies. Number one, policies that would increase the number of affordable housing units in Placer County. Number two, consider a policy that would require good cause before people can be evicted from their rental housing. In other words, it'd have to be some reason other than just the whim of a landlord, a reason such as non-payment of rent or violation of the lease rules.
Herb, try to wrap up your comments if you-
I am. Number three, the final thing, is I would ask the Board to consider rent control policies for Placer County. That would be one of the ways in which to make rentals affordable for our citizens. So once again, thank you for supporting the Housing Authority and its administrative plan, and please consider these policies for low-income residents of Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to address the Board under the public hearing? Yes, sir. Is there anyone else after this gentleman speaks? Okay, thank you.
Will Taylor, Placer Independent Resource Services. We're an agency that serves individuals with disabilities, and a lot of the individuals we serve are on fixed incomes, they're on SSI, and receive about $900 a month. The Section 8 program keeps them housed, and it's extremely important for this population to have access to Section 8 vouchers. We really support the hard work and just amazing results that the Housing Department's done, because they're amazing. If anything, it'd be great if we could get more vouchers. And if there's anything the county can do to support landlords in accepting vouchers that would make the program even more successful. So if there was some kind of incentive or some kind of encouragement that the Board or the county could do, we find sometimes that landlords are resistant to accepting Section 8 vouchers, even though it's guaranteed income. So there must be a way to kind of encourage them and to promote this idea that this is guaranteed income. You are getting your rent this month. So, one final thought, I just want to, I'll laud in honor to Jennifer Montgomery. You've been amazing. Your monthly coffees made you very approachable and open to feedback and information, and you were always well-informed and educated about the issues. I was always impressed by your breadth of knowledge and your wisdom. You were always very balanced in your judgment, very reasoned. Thank you so much for your service, and without either one of us crying, we'll miss you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Seeing nobody else rise under this public hearing, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board. This time, we're being asked to first adopt the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan.
Second.
We have a motion, Montgomery, second, Gore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And then adopt the associated resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, Holmes, second, Wigan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. We now adjourn as the Placer County Housing Authority reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors in order to take up our 920 timed item. This is a proclamation to declare the first week of April as Public Health Week. Do we have a staff presentation on this before I read this?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Supervisors, Council, Mr. Leopold, Joe Arseneath, Assistant Director for the Public Health Division, filling in for Dr. Oldham, who is in Tennessee today. I have two asks of you today. The first is to approve a proclamation declaring April 1st through 7th as Public Health Week in Placer County. And the second is to assist me in recognizing the Public Health Division's 2019 Public Health Champion Award recipient. So I'm hoping I can give a brief overview on the-
It's your item. You go right on.
Recognize our champion-
You betcha.
... and read the proclamation. Thank you. The week of April 1st through the 7th is recognized as National Public Health Week. This year's theme is creating the healthiest nation. Placer County, as usual, is ahead of most counties in the state in this regard, as one of the healthiest counties in California in the annual Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's County Health Rankings. This year's no exception. We sit fourth in the state, just behind Marin, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. Ranking categories include areas like quality of life, health behaviors, social and economic factors, and physical environment. Throughout the month of April, kicking off with Public Health Week, the Public Health Division will be celebrating the services we provide Placer County residents. This includes awareness through media promotion, targeted community outreach, and pushing forward the Placer County Community Dashboard at www.placerdashboard.org. The dashboard offers health-related data and information in support of keeping our communities healthy, and more importantly, aids our division's effort to become a nationally accredited public health agency by the Public Health Accreditation Board. And finally, Public Health Week is historically the time our division identifies a public health champion from the community. In the past, this has included partners in the areas of oral health and homeless services. For 2019, the Public Health Division acknowledges Allison Gontier, did I get that right? From Sutter Roseville Medical Center, Allison leads the effort at the medical center to prevent the spread of infectious disease among healthcare providers, patients, and the Placer County community. Allison works routinely with our public health communicable disease team on disease investigation and surveillance activities. After hours, Allison has been available to the health officer and public health emergency preparedness team for infectious disease consultation and emergency response. In addition, over the past year, Allison has worked with the Oakmont High School Career Academy in Roseville, providing opportunities for high school students to experience the role of infection control in a hospital setting. With that, please join me in celebrating 2019's Placer County Public Health Division Champion Award recipient, Allison Gontier.
Okay. All right. Now, for the proclamation, this is a proclamation declaring April 1st through April 7th, 2019, as Public Health Week in Placer County, whereas the week of April 1st through April 7th is National Public Health Week, and the theme is creating the healthiest nation. And the Institute of Medicine defines public health as, quote, "What we as a society do collectively to assure the condition in which people can be healthy," end quote. And Placer County is consistently ranked as one of the healthiest counties in California in the annual county health rankings published by Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And Placer County's high achievement in these rankings is testimony not only to the success of our public health system, but to the strength of our local community, businesses, governments, schools, parks, and community organizations. And ultimately, Placer County's health is the result of Placer County residents and families and communities, making healthy choices for themselves and the people they love. And a healthy Placer is strategically connected to the overall strength of our county and its future. For the first time in nearly 20 years, Placer County has completed a comprehensive community health assessment and community health improvement plan in preparation for an application for accreditation by the Public Health Accreditation Board. And throughout the month of April, with emphasis on the week of April 1st through April 7th, Placer County Public Health Division and local partners will work to raise awareness of the importance of public health, and will celebrate public health programs, staff, and partners, including announcing the recipients of our 2019 Placer County Public Health Champion Award, wherever she just ran off to. And the residents of Placer County are encouraged to learn more about the importance of our public health system and how to improve their health, their individual health, and the health of the community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of Placer County on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at the regular meeting held March 26, 2019, and does hereby proclaim April 1st through April 7th, 2019, as Public Health Week in Placer County. Can I get an amen?
Amen.
So moved.
All right. Motion, Montgomery, second, Gore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. We need our public health champion back up there for the picture.
Great.
You don't need to run away. Let's let you hold the proclamation, I'll adapt. You're in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I was holding in my stomach as I presented the public health proclamation. Don't judge. Okay, moving on. We have Public Works. This is a public hearing, Sunday on Storage 2, LLC, Annexation, County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Chairman Yuler. Just like to congratulate you on your new position as Supervisor. Excited to have some local representation at the state level. So I am, my name is Jared Deck. I'm here on behalf of Environmental Engineering Division to present the Sunset Storage- I'm here on behalf of Environmental Engineering Division to present the Sunset Storage 2 Annexation. As stated in the board memo, we're requesting the board to open a public hearing to adopt the resolution, which is included in the staff report, to annex parcel 473-010032 into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. The development is a five-acre parcel located southwest of the intersection of Bradley Lane and Baseline Road. This lot consists of, with the Dry Creek Community Plan land use area. There's currently no annexation fee for this area, so the staff supports this request, and in order to move forward, request that your board open the public hearing and adopt a resolution in the staff report to annex this parcel into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions by board members? I see none, so at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for the resolution. Thank you. We have a motion, Holmes, and a second Wigan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Moving on, we've got our Community Development Resource Agency, our 2018 Annual Housing Element Implementation Progress Report. Shauna? Is Shauna running in? There she is. Hello. Caught you by surprise, huh? Moved right through that last one.
Yeah, you did.
I'll tell ya. Not letting any grass grow here.
All right. Good morning. Shauna Purvines.
Need a minute to collect yourself? No, y'all good?
Good, I'm good.
All right.
Maybe just a sec. No. Shauna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency, and I'm here to present the 2018 Annual Housing Implementation Progress Report. This is a report that's brought to your board each year prior to April 1st. The report is required to be submitted to the state by April 1st. The hearing today, the purpose of the hearing today, is to provide the public an opportunity to comment on the report before it's submitted. That being said, at any time, the public or anybody can comment on the report at any time. So even after we submit it, you can still provide comments to staff or to the state. And you may notice that the report looks a little different this year. It's actually not as pretty. The state, through some legislative changes, is requesting our data in a very different way. They provided us a framework to put our data in. HCD readily admits that framework is not very publishable, so you're seeing the report that doesn't look very pretty. But we did put it on our website. It is searchable on our website. When it goes to the state, it'll also be searchable there, and we're working with the state to provide a better format for delivering the data next year. So I think you'll see that change. Just to talk about a couple of notable accomplishments this past year, we are still moving forward with the DeWitt Center Master Plan, or the Placer County Government Center Master Plan that is actually coming to your board in two weeks for consideration. And this past year, we also entered into some agreements to work on a affordable housing project up in the Tahoe area, Butt Dollar Hill. We are also a recipient this past year of $500,000 for our First Time Home Buyer Program. And for the second year in a row, we did see our secondary dwelling, or ADUs, accessory dwelling units, go up. On average, in the past, we used to do about 15 to 16 units per year. This is now the second year in a row that we've been in the 40 to 50 units. So we're definitely seeing a trend in the construction and development of second units. So with that, I will stop, but before I stop, I do have to say thank you to Supervisor Montgomery. Thank you for all your support for housing, and I know that in your new role, you're going to do amazing things.
All right. At this time, we are going to conduct our public hearing and receive comments on this annual housing element, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good morning. My name's Annette Tomlin, and thank you very much for your time. Today, I stand before you representing the face of homelessness. I currently live in a shelter because I'm unable to find housing, even though I've tried many different avenues. I've even been pre-approved for a loan, but it's not enough to be able to buy anything within Placer County. I'm on a set income due to lupus, which took my prior life, and a much larger monthly income away. I volunteer at Seniors First, and I also look forward to beginning classes in August to become a peer counselor. I know this county is working toward a plan, and it's very much appreciated. Myself and others in my position look forward to further plans of action to fill the gaps, to ensure future building of affordable housing. I hope every day that the track record of what works and doesn't work brings this into a reality. The Housing Trust Fund has been collecting fees in lieu for more than 20 years, yet that money has never translated into new affordable housing units in unincorporated Placer County. Using Roseville as an example of the 10% inclusionary policy proves it works. I think we should get together a housing division with staff dedicated to management and accountability in hopes that we can use incentive programs for developers to propose more contracts and projects. I think we should get on the fast track where we can waive more impact fees to help pave the way to how special districts reduce fees for affordable housing projects also. We all need to be accountable to a goal that is clear and measurable with specific targets that stakeholders can rally around. Let's get the fee-in lieu loophole eliminated so that we can start to do the right thing. We need to get on with real solutions and maybe follow the example of Roseville by having a successful and consistent track record of building affordable units. As was mentioned earlier, the PIT numbers have gone up. To give you the number from last year so that we compare to this year, 587. The numbers that have newly been released include 66% adults ages 25 to 59, 16% of adults 60 and over, 12% children under 18, 6% adults 18 to 24. I implore you, implore you, not to let the background noise distract or delay us from taking practical steps. Let's get the ball rolling on real solutions and give people a chance to have a home and be a productive part of Placer County community, Placer County communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We got this gentleman, but you can come, there, open seat right up here. You want to come grab one of those?
Good morning. Once again, I'm Herb Whitaker, the Managing Attorney of Legal Services of Northern California, and I would also like to support the proposition that the county should adopt the Housing Element Report and send it to the state. The main thing that I would like to emphasize, I'll hit my evidence this time, is that the board needs to really look at the report and really look at the data. If you look at page two of the report, it reports that in terms of the housing development for very low-income units over the eight-year period that we're in now, starting in 2013, we've developed 36 units. Most of those were at Quartz Ridge. That's the amount of housing for very low income. For above-moderate income housing, we've produced 1,756, which is 99% of the goal for the eight-year period. We still have three years left, and we're already at 99%. That means Placer County is being very successful at producing above-moderate income housing, but abysmal at producing affordable low-income housing. A few of the statistics. I cited to you the California Housing Partnership a moment ago. That report reports that the state spends $14 on homeowners in the form of real property and mortgage tax deductions for every $1 that it spends for rental assistance. So the low-income renters are getting the short end of the stick here. It also illustrates that government can have an impact on housing. That's why we have so much above-moderate income housing in Placer, but very little affordable housing. Also, please consider the Auburn Journal from last week, which reports that regional home sales are on the rebound. It reports that in Placer County, there were 141 units that were approved in the last year, and it says that the sweet spot price in January, so that was just for January, the sweet spot price was between $351,000 and $400,000, which means, once again, we're producing a lot of above-moderate income housing. Who is this housing going to? It's going to, in large part, people who are migrating from the Bay Area. Once again, the Auburn Journal, August 2017, reports that there has been a migration of people from the Bay Area. The census data from 2006 to 2015 illustrates that most of Placer County's new residents during this 10-year period have been coming from Sacramento County and from the Bay Area. They come to Placer County because it says Placer County's main attraction is its affordability. The Sacramento Bee also reports that there's been a huge influx of immigration from the Bay Area to Placer County, and that this is, this is taking up the above-moderate income housing. Now, I'm not against above-moderate income housing, but this illustrates that people are selling out their condos in the Bay Area, coming to Placer County and paying cash, when we have people like Annette, who couldn't even get a loan to be able to buy any housing. People are coming to Placer County to pay cash. These folks could afford to contribute to the affordable housing that we need in Placer County if we have the appropriate government policies, and I would endorse those policies that Annette just recommended to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and also, thank you Supervisor Montgomery. You've been my supervisor for many years. I appreciate your work.
Good morning. My name is Janie Evans. I am a member of Placer People of Faith Together and a member of the Sierra Foothills Unitarian Universals in Auburn. I'm here this morning to emphasize what the previous gentleman had said in terms of our inattention to the low, very low, and extremely low-income folks in terms of our housing goals. We, in 2018, I noticed there were zero new units for the extremely low and low income, and only one unit added for the low category. That is completely unacceptable, in my view, and it's a serious indication of our lack of attention in our county. We know that many of our residents are just one event away from homelessness. One car repair bill, one big medical bill. And so we need to be more committed to the, and meet the housing needs of all of our low-income, as well as our moderate and higher-income county residents. There is some good news. There is the tiny house ordinance. We need to move and finish on that, as well as an inclusion policy. And there is, of course, the good news of the Mercy Project and many others, but to emphasize, this is really not enough. Finally, I'd like to thank Supervisor Montgomery for your service and your responsiveness and collaboration with many of your constituent organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to just, yes?
Jeff Short with the North State Building Industry Association. I'd just like to take this time to thank Shauna and Sidra for their good work on this year's housing element. The work goes on, but what they're doing to help open up the housing code, to make it, to make housing more affordable, shown most notably in 2018 with the tiny housing ordinance, but I know that that work continues, and we're happy to continue working with them to, to meet that, that goal. Also, want to take the time to congratulate you, Supervisor Montgomery, on your new role. I feel safer already. And just as someone who's worked for a public official, I've got to say, your availability throughout that district, it's not always easy to be available everywhere, and yet somehow you've made it happen. So thank you for your service, and again, congratulations.
Veronica Blake, Placer Community Foundation. I'm, I'm standing here today, and I'm just feeling sad that even with all the attention that you have put into the affordable housing issue and that your staff has, that we're still falling so short for the affordable housing needs for the community. It's really time for us to acknowledge that what we've been doing isn't working, so something's got to change. The inclusionary policy is one way that we can get some units built. We need to make sure that we're using more surplus land when it's available. We need the county to set aside some general fund money to meet the gap on the 79-unit project, so we don't lose that one. And there's just a number of other things that need to happen so that people like Annette can find a home. So thanks so much for your attention to this, but let's keep going.
Wayne Nader, Chairman Euler, Supervisors, Karen and Todd. I won't echo some of the concerns that have already been brought up about the shortfall that we have, not just in this county, but throughout the state. It's drastic. It's getting worse. I want to thank Shauna for all the work that she's been doing. She's really fighting an uphill battle, because the county is way behind on this issue, as I think the state has, but we really haven't addressed this effectively. I mean, otherwise, we would see results on the ground. I would, I have one cautionary thing for you to consider, and you probably already are anticipating this. We're hearing rumblings in Sacramento that if the counties don't address this, they will. And we know that anything that comes out of Sacramento is not good news for us. It creates hurdles that make it even more difficult to do what we need to do. So we need to address this, and I'm asking you, as a board, that we need to move this forward. I know you've put together this stakeholders group that's working with the BIA and some of the other groups, but we need to move this forward. We need to see some real action on this. So I would encourage you to really get serious about this, make this happen sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. We are being asked to approve this report so that it can be submitted to the California Department of Housing, Community Development, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. What's the pleasure of the board?
I had some comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see lights there. I apologize. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, thank you. I want to say thank you to Shauna for putting this report together. The work to put it together, even though it's not lovely and beautiful and filled with pictures, is very much appreciated. I have to echo, and I'm sure, Shauna, you feel the same way, the concerns about these, you know, 2.6% and, you know, 8.8% and really just not getting to addressing the problems of the very low, extremely low, low, and even moderate. And we've heard it today, I've said it before, this comes as no surprise to anyone, I think it's time that we adopt the Roseville model. I think Roseville has been incredibly successful, or at least significantly more than Placer County has, in getting these things actually constructed. We need to move away from the in lieu program as much as humanly possible, understanding that in some very narrowly tailored circumstances, it might make sense. But the idea that we're going to get $4,000 or $6,000 per unit that is somehow going to be able to be cobbled together to actually construct, we're just deluding ourselves if we think that is actually a model that is going to be successful. So although I won't be here to vote on it when this comes back to us, I would strongly urge our board to really look at adopting the Roseville model and making that strong commitment to making sure that we serve the public. We do have a couple of opportunities. The Nahos property, I think, is a wonderful opportunity up in Tahoe. I've gotten a lot of different feedback, as you can imagine, from folks in the Tahoe area. Some folks saying there should be no rentals. It should all be whole homeownership. And, you know, as Herb pointed out, it is really rentals that are the significantly missing piece in Placer County. missing piece in Placer County. Could we do with more whole ownership at those lower-income levels? Absolutely. But, most of us got to homeownership after renting. We didn't go straight to homeownership. And so, you know, I think the model that's being envisioned for Nahas with more rentals than homeownership, I think that's a fantastic model, and I think we really need to focus on doing more of those. That said, I'm meeting on Thursday, I think, with Jennifer Merchant and some other folks up in Tahoe, to look at a piece of property that the county owns, potentially a surplus piece of property, in Serene Lakes, in my neighborhood, because we have to stop being nimby's around this, and we have to start being yimby's and saying, "Yes, in my backyard." You know, we've got a piece of property in Serene Lakes that the county owns. It was envisioned many, many years ago for a corporation yard. We have a corporation yard, working with the local water district. We probably don't need our own. So, I think we just need to, all of us individually within our own districts, start working to identify those pieces of property that can be transformed into something that is going to serve our communities and our county and our state much more directly by providing rental and homeownership opportunities for folks. So, again, Shawna, thank you for all your work on this. I'm absolutely going to be, you know, saying, "Yes, let's move this forward and get this submitted to the state." But I just think we've got to move beyond the, "Yes, we have lots of property that could be built," and the collection of in-lu fees, to actually aggressively moving forward on partnering with private partners and other public partners to get these things built. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Gore.
Thank you, Shawna, for the report, and of course, we'll vote to support it, but I do want to address the issue of affordable housing. And, you know, it's clear that we've made some progress, but certainly not enough, and it's evident, I think we all know that. And now, the question is, how do we get there? And I appreciate the work that's been done on the Affordable Housing Task Force, and I think that's important. Work has to be done there, and then ultimately, we have to get to a place where we actually have more units for rent, for people to purchase. So, there's work that has to be done. I do want to say that a $4,000 per unit in-lu fee is just not enough. We know that. And there's been money that's set aside, but $4,000 a unit is not enough. And so, we need to make that change. I don't know what that looks like. Is it a 10%? Is it, it's certainly more than $4,000 a unit, because quite frankly, that's just laughable, honestly, when we're looking at trying to make sure that we get homes built. Now, that being said, I know that it's not solely on the backs of our developers, because housing is extremely expensive to build, because we have the state regulations, because we've got all sorts of codes and permitting fees, et cetera. So, that's the biggest challenge, but I know that we've got to get to this point, and I want to make sure we, as a board, move forward to address what the requirement is as we develop housing, as we work with our developers to do that.
Thank you. Supervisor Wagen.
Just a little bit of perspective from me, for what it's worth. So, want to start by saying, there's nothing that I've heard with regards to this issue that I disagree with, except rent controls. I would never support rent controls. I'm a market-based type guy, so, so one small thing in context of all of that. But I think, for some perspective, what, and for staff, I think the problem, the frustrations mostly of what I've heard, is the fact that, it's not that the county hasn't been doing some really good work lately, last couple of years or so, and I expect that to continue. So, things like the inclusionary housing element and the in-lu fee, the sooner they get back to the board, the better, but I know you're working hard on all that. I think the problem, the frustration, comes from the fact that we came to this party very late. There's a story there, but it's behind us. So, with everybody's continued participation and great staff work and the players that have been participating in this process, if we keep doing that, I think we're going to make great progress as we move forward.
And I'll give you my perspective. Since Robert shared, I'll share as well. So, we hear, time and again, that Roseville is doing a good job meeting their requirement, and they are. But that's because Roseville's doing a good job actually building houses of any kind. In 1994, I, as a member of this board, sat here and approved our countywide general plan. In that countywide general plan, we approved two projects, Placer Vineyard and Bickford. Since 1994, since we approved that, I, just off the top of my head as I was sitting here, since that time, Roseville has built Olympus Point, Stone Ridge, the North Central Plan with La Provence, Del Webb, Sun City, West Park, and they've already got Sierra Vista coming out of the ground. They built all those projects. We still haven't turned a shovel of dirt on two of the projects that our board said was going to move forward in 1994. So, yes, Roseville's meeting their requirement, because they're actually building new houses of a variety of types, and they're able to then do their affordable housing as they're building their housing for a variety of types. So, I encourage us to meet that requirement, but that requirement's not going to be met absent other things getting built right along with it. So, I know that we're making good strides, and we, our board just adopted the revised 1A plan, A1 1A plan for Placer Vineyard. Hopefully, we'll see some activity on that this summer. And I know that we've got Regional University coming back to us here pretty soon, so hopefully we'll see some activity on that. But, we're not going to be building affordable housing the way that our incorporated cities do until we actually start building housing. So, that's my editorial comment. With that, we are being asked to go ahead and file this 2018 Annual Housing Element Implementation Progress Report for submission to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. We have a motion, Holmes, second, Montgomery. Maybe we just hand it to you. You can hand deliver it and save the postage. It's going to the Governor's Office. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. All right. We are done with our timed items. Our first department item is an elections item. Joel, I'm going to take your item right after elections, so that Ryan can be here for it. Item 10A, I'm going to take that right after the elections item. So, at this point, if our clerk recorder registrar voters and his entourage want to come forward on this item, that would be great.
Good morning, Chairman Euler and members of the board. CEO Leopold, Council Swab. I am Ryan Ronco, your clerk recorder registrar voters, and with me is Lisa Kramer, our Assistant County Clerk, Steve and I, our Assistant Recorder/Registrar Voters, and Philip Chantry, our Elections Manager.
The aforementioned entourage.
The entourage, if you will, and Happy Election Day, as evidenced by my tie. It's either very slow at the polls, or it's very busy, but staff is handling everything, or it's very busy and staff is swimming furiously upstream, and they just don't want to tell us. But, all four of us are here to address you today. Before I begin, may I add Supervisor Montgomery, I'm excited to have such an important item in front of you for your last meeting. It's been an honor being your clerk recorder registrar voters, and you've been such a champion for us. We really thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Not just me, but the entire clerk recorder Elections Office says, "Good luck in this next chapter of your, of your story." I'm here to seek
You will see my closing, my closing court statement.
That's right. We're going to
All of those good words would not keep us from coming after With a big signing in your signature, right?
We're here to seek your board's approval to allow me to enter into a contract with Dominion Voting Systems for new voting equipment for Placer County. The contract is for approximately, after taxes and shipping, around $3.5 million annual ongoing costs, start at approximately $300,000. And to that end, I would like to thank my management staff and the amazing people over at Brett Woods Procurement Shop. In particular, in this instance, Ben Brammer, who together negotiated over $1 million off of the initial contract price, and by locking in software licensing fees, knocked off over $100,000 on ongoing costs from the bottom line of what you're being presented today. Little bit of history, Placer County's last major elections equipment purchase was in 2001, when we acquired the bulk of our, the optical scan voting system we use today for around $1.8 million. The touchscreen voting units were added in 2006 as required by federal law, at a cost of an additional $1.7 million to purchase. The optical scanners that make up the heart of our voting system are at least 18 years old, and I say at least 18 years old, because we don't really know how long they were on the shelves at the vendor before we acquired that system. This system has been a workhorse. We have conducted 51 elections since their implementation in 2002, that includes today's election, and our post-election auditing and occasional recounts show that the system counted accurately and with transparency. However, just like any 18-year-old computer you might still be using, the system is tired. Some parts are no longer being manufactured for this equipment. We often have to cannibalize some of our equipment just to keep other pieces running. We have parts of the system that cannot be repaired, such as the ballot feeders that are used to automatically field, to feed the vote-by-mail ballots into the central count tabulators. Those of you who observed our ballot counting operations during election season have seen us recently having to hand-feed every single vote-by-mail ballot, one by one, through those tabulators, a very labor-intensive and time-consuming process. Let me stress that this voting equipment is still accessible, it's still accurate, and it's still safe from being hacked from outside actors. However, our voting system is falling apart and needs to be replaced. If age were not enough of a consideration, just a few weeks ago, on February 27th, California's Secretary of State, Alex Padilla, provided notice to all California counties that older systems, such as our current voting system, will be decertified for use effective August 27th of this year. Over 30 counties are now scrambling to replace their aging voting systems. This announcement will likely accelerate the decision-making process for many counties, which may stress the availability of equipment from the three vendors who find themselves in California's marketplace right now. One more consideration, the fiscal year 2018-19 state budget included $134 million for the purpose of replacing aging voting systems. Each county has a specific dollar amount set aside for this purpose. Placer's allocation is just a little bit more than $1.4 million. Accordingly, because of this funding source, many counties have already begun the process of acquiring new systems. The recent decertification has only made counties that much more motivated to get into the acquisition queue. So, that brings us to this decision today. As I mentioned, there are three vendors who are selling voting systems in California. However, there are only two vendors who are certified to the California Voting System standards, and therefore, there are only two systems available for purchase at the moment that would allow us to utilize the state reimbursement of $1.4 million. The Placer County Elections Office viewed demonstrations from both eligible systems, and pending your approval, would like to enter into a contract with Dominion Voting Systems for their Democracy Suite 5.2 system. This system is very similar to Placer County's current voting system. It's a paper-based voting system with optical scan ballot scanners and ADA-compliant touchscreen units deployed to each precinct on Election Day. It is the system that provides the least amount of change in what our voters and poll workers experience from our current voting system. While this system is very similar to our current system, however, other than being new, it has several important upgrades over what we have now. First off, it comes with high-speed ballot scanners that will improve ballot processing and speed up ballot counting. By counting vote-by-mail ballots more quickly, we will reduce the number of vote-by-mail ballots we carry into the post-election canvas period. Secondly, this new system will allow us to perform ballot adjudication electronically. Some of you have witnessed ballots that come to us from vote-by-mail voters, where they mark an oval for candidate X, and then decide, "Oh, my gosh, I wanted candidate Y," and so they put Xs, or arrows, or whatever. Well, the system can't read, it can't read those ballots. So, we need a way to adjudicate those. Those are being hand-duplicated now. We will be able to do this electronically with this new system. It will, of course, log those transactions for purposes of transparency and request to recounts to prove that the ballot was duplicated correctly. There's way more upgrades that I could geek out about and talk to you about, but I'll just leave it at that. Finally, as I mentioned, it's Election Day today, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank, we originally purchased the current voting system from a company called Global, which then was acquired by Diebold, which then changed its name to Premier, which was then acquired by ESNS, which was then determined to be a monopoly, and then became purchased by Dominion Voting Systems. So, our current voting system vendor, I'd like to thank my staff at the Elections Office and the thousands and thousands of people that have stepped up to be poll workers to serve on Election Day for the way that our current voting system has functioned. Because of their efforts, it has been, this system has been and continues to be safe, secure, accurate workhorse for the voters of Placer County. With that, I'm here to entertain any questions you might have about this item.
Board members, have any questions before we open the public? Supervisor Gore.
Just one quick question, Ryan.
Yes.
That is the ongoing costs. Obviously, we need updated election equipment, and there's state funds that we have to augment from county funds. What's the ongoing cost? Because, of course, that has to be accounted for
Yes.
In the future.
For sure. The ongoing cost is, right now, going to start right around $300,000 for software upgrades and system maintenance, preventative maintenance. This pales in comparison to what we currently spend on our current system, which is $61,250 in preventative maintenance costs. But, vendors, and not, this is not the only vendor that does this, have realized that there was a cooling-off period in California with the sale of new voting equipment. Back in 2001, 2002, after the Florida elections, there was a move to get rid of punch-card voting, and so, lots of new systems were being purchased. Vendors thought that these new systems would be upgraded every four, five, six years. What they found was, in California at least, with our very stringent guidelines, they weren't able to sell systems, and in fact, these systems that have just been approved are the first new voting systems that have been approved by the Secretary of State's Office in about 10 years. So, the, and, so, the $300,000 that's being asked of us is consistent with what's being asked of counties that have purchased new voting systems. It's, thankfully, because, again, as I mentioned, the work of procurement, unlike some counties, we've been able to fix that, that cost until 2026, and linked any future increases to CPI or not to exceed 3%. So, our ongoing costs are actually going to stay in control. Yeah, thank you.
So, my question, you said there's about $139 million status set aside?
$134 million.
$134 million status set aside for this year. We get 1.4, which is about approximate with us as a percentage of the overall population in the state of California, being a little over 1%. But, I think I heard you say that only 30 counties are actually looking to purchase equipment right now, not all 58. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Other counties have either purchased the equipment already, and they are eligible for that $134, to anticipate where you're going.
That's, that's where I was getting at, is why, why don't we fight for a little more if you already, if we only have 30 of the 58?
Yeah.
Okay.
And LA County is the only county that's actually developing their own system.
Oh, well, good luck with that.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions by board members? No, not seeing any other questions. What's the pleasure of the board on this item? We have a motion. Do we need separate? You want separate? Oh, oh, yeah, then there's that, huh? Sorry. Public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? Okay. Now, let's go ahead and let's break this
What are you fuing for? I was the one that was fuing there.
First, we have the, the resolution authorizing the clerk recorder to enter into the purchase agreement. So, let's go with the resolution first. We have a motion, Montgomery, and we'll give the second to Holmes. I think he snuck it in there. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? And now, the budget revision for $3,570,000. Do we have a motion, a second on that? We had a motion, Holmes, and the second was Gore on that one. And, of course, with this purchase, we will be adding this equipment to the county master fix asset list. Since it is a budget revision, we'll do a roll call, please.
Gore?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Now, I'm going to—if you don't go too far, because I'm going to ask Mr. Joyce to come up with a related item. This is a presentation on SB 139, independent redistricting commissions.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of your board, Todd, Karen. I'm Joel Joyce with the County Executive Office, and I'm here to ask your board to take a position or not regarding Senate Bill 139. Senate Bill 139 is authored by Senator Ben Allen out of LA that seeks to require counties with more than two hundred and fifty thousand in population to establish a nine-member independent redistricting commission. Pretty simple bill. The commission—the bill would require a commission to be fairly restrictive on who can be appointed, and there are two things I would like to note: that nothing currently prohibits Placer County from establishing its own independent redistricting commission currently, and that the bill does—because of the population requirement—it does exclude thirty-two counties within California for this requirement. It's pretty simple, so with that, I take any questions from your board.
Thank you. I wanted to take this item because I spoke with Mr. Ronco yesterday on the item. I know that we have a couple of counties in California who already have established similar models and wanted to get their—a little background on their experience.
Good morning, Ryan Ronco. I'm your clerk recorder, registrar of voters, for the record. I—yes, there are two counties in California that have independent redistricting commissions, LA and San Diego. This item—in addition to being your clerk recorder, registrar of voters, and being on the Kids First Board, I am also co-chair of the Legislation Committee for the California Association of Clerks and Elections Officials, the statewide association for the Elections Office. And in that capacity, I've heard about these independent redistricting commissions. I've heard about the—the difficulty, quite frankly, that LA and San Diego has—the lawsuits that—that seem to pop up around these commissions. And I thought that you should know, for the good of the order, in whatever capacity you want to use this, our Legislation Committee voted to oppose SB 139 at our last meeting on Friday of last week because of the difficulty that we believe this will require county elections officials to undergo in coming up with the three-member selection panel that would then decide on the members of the—this independent redistricting commission. So with that, I just wanted to throw that in there for your decision.
You had some experience shared with you about the costs associated with this beyond litigation?
Yeah, the litigation is very expensive. It does slow the process down. I don't have exact numbers, but certainly would be happy to try to get those from LA and San Diego if you needed them. But—but San Diego especially, at our last meeting, talked about—the—was very vocal and helped to lead that discussion in the opposition because it's so expensive.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions by board? Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I don't see what's broken here in Placer County. We've been doing a pretty good job of redistricting without too much—too much hassle. So I would move to oppose this legislation.
I'm going to ask that you hold that motion until we have a chance to hear from any members of the public, if you're so willing.
Hold that motion.
Okay. Questions or comments? Supervisor Gore?
So I had a chance to read the bill, and when you mentioned it was simple, it's not simple. Oh, my goodness. Right, the requirements to carry this out, and they're all for transparency. Whatever decisions are made as far as redistricting in the future, these will be open to the public. There will be hearings, people will have an opportunity to have input, but this is extremely restrictive. And then the cost of the work that's being asked of these independent commissions to do is extensive as well. So I'm not for an additional state mandate. I think that we can make sure that we do this in a transparent fashion when we have redistricting come up in 2021.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in alignment with Supervisor Gore on this one. I think that, given the incredible restrictions written into the language of the bill, which don't necessarily get us to any better set of individuals who might be appointed to a public commission, and given the fact that we actually have the latitude as a county to set up a public commission—or at least public participation—around this, it seems like what might make more sense for us as a county is to either not take a position on this or oppose it, but have some additional conversations about how to further activate public input into the redistricting process post-2020 census.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other lights up here, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, Supervisor Holmes?
I'm going to oppose this legislation as we move on.
We have a motion, Holmes, and a second. Gore, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you very much. Now, go run an election or something. Go pick us a senator.
Yes, sir.
Okay, jumping back on our department items. Facilities Management?
Good morning, Chair Euler, members of the board. Paul Breckenridge, Facilities Management, Capital Improvements. And just first off, I do want to congratulate and thank Supervisor Montgomery for your many years of support of facilities and me personally. So thank you, and best of luck to you.
I'm sure I will see you at some Auburn symphony events.
Absolutely. I'm going to miss the hats. I'm going to miss the hats. Thank you. So I'm here to request your board approve plan specifications for the 300 Ramp Improvements Project located Buildings 302 to 305. And one—just one thing to note that in the memo, it indicates an address that is different, but we are going to be doing the improvements at 302 to 305, not 301. So at the Government Center with an estimated construction cost of one point one million dollars and authorize staff to solicit bids, this project is included in the Department of Facilities Management for the 1819 capital projects budget in major maintenance projects along with the county-wide roofing, exterior repairs, and the county-wide painting. So we've kind of—we've brought those funds together. In addition, authorize the Director of Facilities Management or designate to award and execute a construction contract not to exceed that one point one million, including selected bid alternates upon review and concerns by the risk and management, and to authorize the Director to execute any necessary change orders with that—to not to exceed number. Just a quick background, the re-roofing of Buildings 304 and 305 is a continuation of the work that was accomplished in 2017-18 that your board approved. The existing roofs have exceeded their useful lives. These buildings are identified in the proposed master plan update to remain as part of the county's corporation yard, and these improvements will ensure their continued viability. The 300 Ramp Improvements Project will include installing where appropriate, new windows, and painting the exteriors of Buildings 303, 304, and 305. Paint new windows at 302 is an alternate—will be identified as an alternate. If there are sufficient funds, we'll go ahead and move ahead with the improvements on that building as well. The construction is expected to begin in mid-July and continue through September of this year, and we'll work with the tenants, including gathering, and make sure that we're coordinating closely with them as occupants of the buildings for those improvements as the work progresses. So in order to proceed with this project, it is requested your board authorize staff to solicit bids and authorize the Director of Facilities Management to award the bid and execute the resulting construction contract. So with that, I'll entertain questions.
Well, first, would you do me a favor? We have—we reference buildings, we have addresses in our staff report. You clarified building numbers. Of what is listed in the staff report, are those addresses still consistent? For instance, we're talking about 11-4-11, 11-4-29, 11-4-59, and 11-4-71 on F. Is that—
The 11-4-11 is Building 301, and that will not have improvements.
That is not.
Right. So the correct numbers are 11-4-29, 11-4-41, 11-4-59, and 11-4-71 F Avenue. Those—that's Buildings 302 to 305.
11-4-41.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by board members prior to opening this up? Seeing none, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? And then just for clarification, we had a very nice presentation last week that talked about burning down—are—that was my word—knocking—removing buildings up at DeWitt. Where are these on that list?
These are in the—the Corporation Yard, which we feel, because of their slab on grade construction and where they are, is—they were all—they were intended originally as warehousing and other things that we feel that we still have some value in those to move ahead with.
So we're not putting new roofs on buildings that we're going to knock down because that's what I can assume I'm going to hear from somebody as—
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, and then just to follow up on that, my recollection is we also last week kind of looked at the analysis of existing buildings' replacement costs versus what it would cost to maintain them, you know, twenty years into the future versus replacements. And these were one of the ones where it frankly made sense to do the repairs and the ongoing maintenance rather than knock them down and build something new.
Absolutely. For the functions that we have within and those—the functions that we have into the future makes a lot of sense to do what we're doing.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Pleasure to the board.
Move approval? So, public?
No, we already did.
We did that.
Yeah, they rushed the microphone.
Okay. All right. I think I moved and Robert seconded.
Okay, we have a motion, Montgomery, second by Wiegand, whether he likes it or not. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. And moving on, our public works item, bridge replacements.
Good morning. Is this on? Okay.
Yeah, it's on. We can hear you.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Alice Atherton, I'm an associate civil engineer in our Public Works Department in our Road and Bridge Design Group, and the action request to today is to adopt a resolution awarding construction contract number 000922 to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Viking Construction Company Incorporated of Rancho Cordova, California, for the construction of the bridge replacement project on Dowd Road over Markham Ravine in the amount of two million six hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars upon county council and risk management concurrence and authorizing the Director of Public Works or designate to execute change orders up to one hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars as needed. This contract is funded with two million six hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars of federal highway bridge program funds. So this is an older bridge located on Dowd Road, which has some significant structural issues and needs to be replaced. The proposal project would construct a new, longer concrete bridge and—which has a higher alignment, and it will be better at conveying flows during flood—flooding times. We are anticipating construction to begin this spring, and during that time Dowd Road will be completely closed from approximately the beginning of May through the end of October. We worked with Procurement Services Division to develop bid number 100181, which was advertised in accordance with the Public Contract Code and posted online at the public purchase website, and we received four formal bids from four firms. And upon evaluation and response—of the responses, Procurement Services determined that Viking Construction Company Incorporated was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a total bid of two million six hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. No bid protests were received, and the—as I mentioned, the project is entirely funded with the highway bridge program, and I wanted to mention that I presented at the rural Lincoln MAC and the Sheridan MAC, and they had no concerns. So with that, I'm hoping to—happy to take any questions.
Any board members have any questions? Supervisor Gore?
No questions, but maybe one encouragement. And I know this is not in the city of Lincoln, but I'm sure that residents in Lincoln utilize that area, and it might be worth reaching out to the city of Lincoln and letting them know that this project, if approved, will be taking place so that we do a good job of just reaching out to our residents.
Excellent. Yeah, and we—I just want to mention, too, that we did coordinate with the city of Lincoln during the design phase, so they're aware of it, but they probably don't know it's coming this quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Among other things, we need to let them know. All right, seeing no other comments by board members, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Okay, bringing it back.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion—Wiegand, I'm sorry, I can't—we do—we—no, no, actually, this is a different one. We do these bridge replacements. Every time a bridge replacement comes across, I'm reminded of the Calvin and Hobbs Strip, where Calvin and his dad are driving along, and they see the signs, "Wait—wait limit" on the bridge," you know, and Calvin says, "Dad, how do they know what the weight limit is?" And his dad says, "Well, they drive heavy and heavy trucks across until it collapses, and then they weigh that truck, and they rebuild the bridge." That's how. So I hope that's not how we do it, but that's evidently in the world of Calvin Hobbs. That's how they answer their bridges. And for some reason, every time we talk about bridge replacements, that's what I think of.
I won't answer.
So when I'm sitting up here, just kind of smirking to myself, "Welcome to the mind of Kirk Euler. A scary place with warning signs that flash before you enter." Okay.
And I won't share what I would—
All right, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Supervisor Montgomery. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item 10B. This is the 1819 Work Plan Progress Report on Strategic Initiatives.
Good morning, Chair Euler, members of the board. Jane Cressington from the CEO's office, here today to provide a progress report on our fiscal 1819 work plan, which you may recall was predicated on the board's strategic planning workshop, which took place a year and a week to the day today. So I'm glad we could get this in while Supervisor Montgomery's still here. As you know, you had your workshop identifying a series of nine critical success factors, a framework, really, for some of the most important things that the board does to shape the county's future. The report details them. I'm simply going to go through each one of them in visual fashion to essentially highlight the items that are done. As we move through the issues, you'll notice that while the list is not all-inclusive of all the things the county does, these are some of the highlighted initiatives that we believe are worth noting for the board in this quarterly progress report. As we move through, each of them, you'll see we have essentially icons that show what is completed, i.e. a checkmark; what is a work in progress, which is an hourglass; what are items coming forward to the board for consideration, action, adoption, approval in the coming months and the month for doing so, or items for the board to consider. So with that, I will launch. The first of these, critical success factors, is strategic relationships and community engagement. As the board is aware, we redesigned the county website in February of 2019. Our work is ongoing, as Joel attested to today, on our legislative advocacy efforts based on the board-approved platform from December, and we are in the midst of establishing our charter review committee. Notice has gone out, we've publicized it, we've got a few applications in, but we extended that deadline till May to allow for the new District Five Board Supervisor. We've also done quite a lot in the neighborhood of regional coordination by OES. Not only did we meet with a multitude of agencies, counties, fire districts, et cetera, in advance of the winter season for emergency coordination, but we conducted joint drills, EOC drills, with the Sheriff's Department, and put out a number of emergency updates, which you may have seen with regard to evacuations, the Placer alerts many of us received when we were on the fire—Cal Fire Tour in January, notifications, as I mentioned, as well as avalanches. We've also begun discussions with our Placer County cities on potential implementation of 2-1-1 service funding, inquiring about interest levels amongst our area cities for a potential joint effort in that regard. This was an issue that CEO Todd Leopold advanced with the city managers in March. With regard to housing, this is certainly an issue that you heard quite a lot about with the housing element discussion earlier. We've also been hard at work. I appreciated Supervisor Wiegand's comments that we have done a lot, but there's certainly a lot left to be done. We brought to the board in September the 1819 Housing Work Plan and provided a progress report at your Tahoe meeting, at which housing was a key element in the workshop preceding the board meeting. We've also been identifying zoning ordinances to improve housing attainability. You heard that certainly in the housing element. You heard that certainly in the housing element update, implementation update that you heard earlier today. We've also been working with our partners, particularly Placer County Mountain Housing Council, with regard to advocacy efforts in Sacramento in February of this year. And we are working currently on the attainable housing project investment strategy, which was previewed with the board in January, and we'll have a formal presentation on our progress in June. With regard to collaborative health and human services, certainly we heard today again about homeless efforts, and we've done quite a lot in that regard. In February, we entered into a project with Roseville for 65 deed restricted units. Also too, Mercy Housing was mentioned as part of the PCGC Master Plan, which will also provide additional units. The board adopted a resolution for over $3 million in grant funding to No Place Like Home. And we're also working further on other efforts. Certainly in January, we completed the count. The official results are due back to the board in May. And we're working on Drug Medical expansion, which went live in November. And in July, we expect to be billing the feds for the requisite services. In the area of children's system of care, we are certainly working hard on that continuum of care. We've implemented the family resource approval, and we are in the midst of implementing children and family team requirements, looking to the state for potential funding, as well as increasing our county emergency foster care capacity, which frankly is a shortage statewide, but we're certainly working to do our part. Also in the area of pet licensure, we have expanded our online services, still making available in-person services, but trying to modernize that service with software for infield licensing. In the area of public serving infrastructure and amenities, this is one of two areas where we've got quite a few items coming to the board in the coming months. You certainly heard earlier this month about the Parks and Trails Master Plan. That is anticipated to come to the board again in June of this year. Placer Parkway right-of-way phase is ongoing. We expect Phase One construction to begin in 2021. PCGC Master Plan, that went to the Planning Commission in March and will be coming to you in April for your review. With regard to capital facilities, we expect to essentially advise you on the latest and greatest on capital improvement plans as part of the fiscal 1920 budget process in June. As you know, we invested 6.5 million in county facilities over the current biennium and expect a similar level in 1920 as well. With regard to library services, the library strategic plan effort kicked off in January, and you will receive an update on that effort in summer. With regard to evaluating public needs, clearly, we were all together last week at the Capitol Workshop, and that too will be brought forward to you as part of the 1920 budget process. With regard to economic development, you're certainly aware that April of last year, we expanded the Placer Business Resource Center, and they've got quite a lot of stats to show with regard to their progress. We're in the midst of working the strategy to target the business with primary jobs based on data from State EDD, and that work is ongoing, as is the disposition redevelopment of the former redevelopment agency properties. We've got two properties currently under contract, that's Kings Beach Center and the Eastern Gateway, with two additional projects expected to go on the market in June. With regard to the tourism master plan funding, we are under contract with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association for a series of related services such as destination marketing, visitor info, and TMP grants. And work is ongoing on the Tahoe Business Improvement District, which you heard a bit about in January in Tahoe. Other strategies in the Tahoe Basin include finalizing the Tahoe City Lodge tourist accommodation units, which will be breaking ground in January. And again, there are plethora of other eastern Placer County initiatives summarizing here, from the expansion of the Small Business Development Center to other initiatives underway. With regard to prudent, all-inclusive financial planning, you certainly heard a bit about that at the mid-biennial, or I'm sorry, the bi, the mid-year. I come from a two-year budget land. We are annual here. You certainly heard about that in late February. We're working to develop not just mid-year, but quarterly reports in the coming budget year, and including the five-year capital plan with regard to all assets, some of which you discussed last week, in our upcoming 1920 process. With regard to other financial planning, certainly pension issues have been a concern to this board, that certainly we heard a bit about that in late February. We expect to bring information to the board with regard to our updates on pension and OPEB policies this summer, are in the process of essentially implementing software that'll help us manage those obligations going forward. In the area of public safety, a study began this week on standards of cover that will help identify our capacity and capabilities going forward, as well as fair share funding requirements. And as you'll see in the coming budget, the Sheriff's Office is advancing a request to implement body cameras, which was also an item on that work plan. With regard to other joint public safety services, certainly efforts to improve crime victim programs, as well as address changes in state bail reform legislation are underway amongst our public safety departments. Also too, in this area, there's been much work to examine our mental health services and support. We expect to award the Auburn Jail contract, which will be coming to you in April of 2019, and we are waiting state approval for the South Placer Acute Mental Health Unit. Also too, in this area, you discussed Burton Creek at the Capitol Workshop last week, and we expect to have groundbreaking on the Coroner Facility in June of this year. With regard to other implementation-focused integrated services across the county organization, certainly those of us within the county have heard quite a bit about Workday, that power users got started with Phase One of the financials, and that effort is ongoing, and we have pushed HR Two, or I'm sorry, Phase Two of the HR issues to June. We've also enhanced self-service options via online platforms, which is an effort that IT advanced in February, saving over $100,000 per year in those services. Also too, employee training efforts are underway and will get started in June of 2019. And we also may want to consider criminal justice data sharing. Some of you may recall the 2015 Criminal Justice Master Plan, which addressed the period 2015 through 2018. It may be time for the public safety departments to consider refreshing that update for the future going forward with regard to data sharing. Also too, in this area, we may want to revisit the issue of automated agenda processing to render that process more efficient than it currently is. We're currently also well underway with adapting and implementing cloud technologies. Forty-one percent complete with the implementation of Microsoft 365, my former agency thanks you, and we expect to have that completed by December of 2019. Land use planning and environmental stewardship is the second area I referenced earlier. Infrastructure was the first, where we have quite a few issues coming to the board in the coming months. The Placer County Conservation Plan will, we expect and hope that will make the federal register listing in May of this year with a presentation to the board in fall of this year. The Sustainability Plan, the draft EIR, is planned to be released in May of 2019 with the board presentation pending. And the Regional University, which Chair Ulller mentioned earlier, will be coming to the board in May 2019. Beyond that, Sunset Area Ranch and Placer Ranch is scheduled to come forward to the board in mid to late 2019. Bickford has some improvement plans underway, in process. Rielo is under construction, so shovels have been turned with 33 unit permits pulled to date. Also too, in this arena, Placer Vineyards, infrastructure improvement plans have been approved, and construction is anticipated with three plans, three subdivision plans in review. In the area of sustainable groundwater management, quite a few MOUs have been signed with the partner agencies en route to joint implementation towards that January 2022 state deadline. Also too, the winery brewery ordinance, you'll be pleased to know the EIR is going to be released for public review next month with a presentation to the board this coming fall. In the area of zoning ordinances, staff has been hard at work with regard to zoning amendments to address myriad facilities such as antenna, communications, and solar facilities, and we expect to bring added ones forward to the board in the areas noted here in April. Also too, we continue to look at ways to improve our development services. The fee study will be coming, will be completed this summer with a board presentation this fall. Land development process improvements are ongoing in the areas cited here, and we hope to also undertake electronic submittal, plan check, and other entitlement improvements in May of this year. We continue to identify properties for open space preservation, with the Bradley property and the Markham Conservation easement already done, but that work is ongoing, as is Tahoe Basin Area Implementation, where we've got a number of initiatives underway. So all this is a roundabout way of saying, one year later, we've made much progress, there's much that is coming to the board in the foreseeable future for action and consideration, but there's still much left to do. But one year in, we feel good about the progress that we've made and are certainly pleased to keep you updated via quarterly reports going forward. So with that, I thank you for your time and attention, and thank you to Supervisor Montgomery for your service.
Okay. Before you wander too far, Todd, did you have something?
Yeah, Supervisor, I just wanted to, one, thank Jane for putting this together. I know we had talked about, and I've kind of shared with you the opportunity to work, kind of our work plan and kind of update on a quarterly basis. This is kind of the first of what you should see through the course of the year. I know you have projects, we talked about those like today, kind of one-off projects, but I think it's good for you to see collectively what we're doing in these specific areas, and you'll see it more refined as we move forward. But Jane really put a good kind of starting point to it. And I do think, I wanted to give a kind of shout-out to the different departments, because they also provide a great deal of input about the status of these. So thank you for all the support and effort that you put into this. I appreciate it.
Sure. And thanks as well to Miranda Glick in Central Services and Eric Bergen, without whose images it'd be much harder to tell the story.
Okay. Supervisor Wiegand?
I just want to compliment you, and thank you, Jane, on an excellent report, and Todd and our department heads. You know, it's great to go to another retreat. We do that a lot in the board, but actually, this is the most measurable and communicated results that I've ever seen from any retreat that I've ever attended. So that's a great statement, I think, for our management staff in the county. And it's not going unnoticed by me, but it's a great platform by which to move forward. The bad news for you is now we've got some specific information with some expected dates, and we're going to be watching all of that, but I'm really pleased with what I heard, and thank you all.
And certainly, the board will be quite busy in the coming months, as you could tell.
Yeah.
Supervisor Holmes?
I echo Supervisor Wiegand's comments. It's, we've got so much going on in Placer County, it's hard to fathom it all, but when you put it into a platform like this, where we understand everything that's going on, you just forget how much we're doing. So thank you. A great, great presentation, not too detailed, but enough for us to get a hold of what's going on. So thank you so much, Jane.
Thank you.
All right. Any members of the public have any comments or questions on the presentation that we just received? Seeing none, I don't believe any action is being requested of us on this. This was just an update, correct?
Correct. Stay tuned.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, and we are down to item 11A. This is considering a short-term extension of the District Five aid contracts. Our Chief of Staff to the Board of Supervisors, Terry Valdi, making a rare appearance in front of our board, but welcome. Well, did you need any introductions? Can I help you?
Nope. I think I've been here longer than Malia.
All right.
Even longer than you. Just remember that. Terry Valdi, Chief of Staff. The item before you today, if you're consideration, is a request to extend the contract end dates for District Aids Jocelyn Maddox and Lindsay Romack. As you recall, and is outlined in the staff memo, at your March 12th board meeting, Supervisor Montgomery announced her resignation date, and at that meeting, she suggested that your board consider retaining her District Aids beyond her resignation date to assist with day-to-day operations in District Five, as well as to cover the six upcoming municipal advisory council meetings that are scheduled in April. This topic was agendized today based on that request, and so with that, I'll leave it to your board to discuss.
All right. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Terry, thank you for presenting so concisely. I appreciate it. As your board knows, our District Aids terms run coterminous with hours. My concern is, your board will be taking up a replacement April 9th, I believe, April 9th, yes? And while I'm fairly sanguine that you will make a decision on that date, there's a number of folks who are putting in applications, so there is a potential that you may not make a decision until the 23rd of April, understanding that you have to make a decision by the end of April, or the governor will appoint, and I'm certain that the board will not choose that option. But my suggestion is that we look at extending the date of the two District Aids, Jocelyn Maddox and Lindsay Romack, to a term not to exceed two months. And I say two months only because there is the possibility that it could be as late as the 23rd that you guys appoint. That would give that individual who would be my replacement, an opportunity to have about a month to work with the two District Aids, to get brought up to speed on constituent issues, ongoing projects both in the Fifth District and in the other districts, and everything else that you are all familiar goes with our job. So my, my suggestion that I hope your board will consider is a two-month extension of the contract beyond the 31st, so that you guys have ample time to make a decision about replacements, and that individual has ample time to coordinate with existing staff, one, to determine if they want to keep them on board, but two, and more importantly, to get caught up on all the issues within the district and make sure that nothing gets dropped moving forward in terms of just constituent services. So that's my suggestion.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have any thoughts on that? We have a staff recommendation that I believe takes it through April 23rd. Supervisor Montgomery is suggesting toward the, more toward the end of May. I would suggest that if we are open to the possibility of going beyond what's in the board packet, that we make it coincident with an actual board meeting, so that the contract ends on the day that another contract might be issued, whether it's to them or to anybody else. So our board meeting dates in May, I'm sorry, were you recommending April 22nd or 23rd for this one?
23rd.
It was the 23rd, right? Yeah, okay. That's right.
And the next board meeting dates are May 14th.
May 14th and the 28th.
28th.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I would recommend, is if we are looking at the possibility of extend, well, first of all, the threshold question is, do we want to extend the contracts at all? The secondary question is, if we do want to extend the contracts, extend to what date. And so rather than just entertaining a motion, what I'd like to do is just have a little conversation around the two issues, on the issue of the threshold question of are we willing to extend the contracts? I am, and so I'll open it up to Bonnie.
Yes, I am willing to extend them, and I would, guessing that there's consensus before we jump onto the date.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor?
Yeah, I'm willing to extend.
Okay, so now it's just a question of, of the dates. I, I share Supervisor Montgomery's optimism that April 9th, we will come to some agreement, but in the event that we don't, we have reserved for ourselves the opportunity on April 23rd to revisit the item. And I'm, I'm confident that anybody who might be appointed by the 23rd, giving them till the 14th to conduct interviews, will probably be enough time, that's about three weeks' worth of time. So I'm fine going to the 14th as opposed to the 28th. And of course, whomever we select, if they come back to our board on the 14th and say, I haven't had enough time to do my interviews, I'd like to extend these, that's certainly that Supervisor's prerogative at that time. So my, I would offer the compromise suggestion of May 14th, and open it up to your thoughts, Supervisor Gore?
I appreciate that. You know, one thing I'm thinking about is just even time for that board member to have interviews and make a decision, which also means that people have to give notice if the new supervisor chose to bring in people. So that being- So that being said, I think actually the 28th of May, that board meeting actually allows the new supervisor that opportunity to know these folks, get up to speed, and then actually do a hiring process, and then make a decision by the 28th. So I would be open to moving it to May 28th.
Okay. Supervisor Wigan, thoughts?
Bonnie convinced me. I think, I mean, you've spoken to Jennifer a little bit about this, and if I were in her shoes, I would be concerned about little things like telephone calls being returned. If government was a business, local government's market niche, I believe, is that we're accessible. And I know Jennifer is very passionate about the job that she had, so I'd want that to be.
Until Sunday.
Yeah, just, you want to leave being confident that things are going to do as well as they possibly can, and I think the 28th makes sense in that regard.
So you're fine with the 28th, is that?
Yep.
Okay. And Supervisor Holmes, any thoughts?
I agree with Supervisor Euler. I'm fearful that if whoever takes that seat, may have someone in line already, and I don't want to tie their hands to appoint who they want to represent, you know, the supervisor. But it sounds like we've got a consensus of May 28th, so I will, in the interest of congenial, you know what I mean.
Congeniality? It comes with a crown in everything, if you're Miss Congeniality. Got a sash, it's great. What I do in my time is my business. So, at this time, unless members of the public wish to address the board as we're talking about this. Yes, Karen?
Can I propose a motion then?
No, I'm going to let one of my colleagues propose a motion.
Okay, fine.
You're not a supervisor. I'll let you clarify the motion if you're not comfortable that the motion meets, passes legal muster. But I will leave it to one of my colleagues, Supervisor Gore, to make a motion.
So I'll make a motion to extend the contracts of the District Aides through May 28th.
Up to May 28th.
Up to, up to May 28th.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so now...
May I clarify?
Yes, you may.
Could we clarify that motion to direct staff to prepare contract extensions?
Yes. Let's remove that amendment.
All right. And the second concurs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, I appreciate your indulgence.
That takes us to closed session, and County Council, this is where I'm going to let you say whatever you want to say.
Well, thank you. The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider three items of existing litigation and one item of real property negotiations.
Wonderful, thank you. Anticipated time on these?
About 15 minutes.
15 minutes. See you back here. Let's make sure that these guys are up and rolling. You're recording? Okay.
The board meant in closed session to consider three items of existing litigation. On Aki versus County, the board provided direction. On County of Placer versus AmerisourceBergen, County, the board provided direction. On Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, the board authorized the county to intervene. On Conference with Real Property Negotiations, the board provided direction. This concludes report out of closed session.
There being no other items on the agenda for members of this board at this meeting, we are adjourned to our regularly scheduled meeting on April 9th, and we adjourn by wishing our colleague Bon Voyage.